Okay, people, it's seven o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. My name is Kathy Barnard, I'm the chairman of Planning Board, and this is the March 7th, 2017 Planning Board meeting. Let me introduce the Planning Board members. Down to extreme right at the end of the table, Brad Harriman, who's a representative from the Board of Selectmen. Sitting next to Brad, Paul O'Brien, Mike Hodder, Stacy Pope, who is the vice chairman, and actually, it is her last meeting. Oh sadness. We'll carry on without you. And to my left, John Thurston, Von Dugan, and Dave Aliceandroni, who is an alternate. Matt Sullivan is our planning, Director of Planning and Development, and Leanne Keithley is Recording Secretary. So, first item is the Lone Wolf Brewing Company. This public hearing, we had a public hearing, it was continued from February 14th, 2017. This is the property at 82 Haynes Hill Road. It was continued until tonight, March 7th, but the applicant, you folks just received a, the letter sent by the applicant's representative, asking for further continuance until April 4th, 2017. If somebody would be willing to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Motion has been made?
Seconded.
And seconded? And all in favor of continuing the Lone Wolf Brewing Company application until April 4th, 2017, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moved. Okay, thank you. The next item in the one scheduled appointment and public hearing is Wright Gully LLC. This is a public hearing for a site plan review, and also, we're looking at a governmental use of this property in accordance with RSA 674:54. This property is at 130 Pine Hill Road, tax map 175-6, case 201705. The way this is going to proceed, Mr. Reins, we're going to have you make a presentation first, and then Mr. Sullivan will follow you. We have a sort of a new way, but just a second, so I can just explain the procedure quickly, since there's really no one here, I guess, to explain it to. But nevertheless, we'll hear from Mr. Reins and Mr. Sullivan, and then Planning Board members can ask any questions. We'll then determine if the application is complete, and if it is, we'll open the public hearing, and any member of the public can make a comment at that particular time, and then close the public hearing and deliberate. And so...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to state that, bring it to the Board's attention, that back in 1987, I believe it is, that I did the original site work on this project. I've had no contact with it since then or anything, but I wanted to bring it to the Board's attention to see if there was a problem, if they wanted me to recuse myself, or if the Board's comfortable and the clients are comfortable, you know, we'll proceed on, so...
I have no objection.
Okay. Any members of the Planning Board have?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for that, man.
Okay, why don't you proceed, and you're going to focus on the two parts of this application, the site plan and the RSA?
Yes.
Okay.
So, good evening, for the record, I'm Jim Reins from White Mountain Survey and Engineering, and I'm here representing Wright Gully LLC, in a minor site plan review and informational meeting for governmental use in accordance with RSA 674-54. Ordinarily, this type of an application would be heard by the Technical Review Committee, since there are no exterior changes being proposed. However, since RSA 674-54 is set up to only be reviewed by the Planning Board, not the TRC, a collective decision was made, speaking with Matt and Kathy, to come before the Planning Board and go for a minor site plan review, as well as the governmental review. The only reason we need a, excuse me, a formal approval, is that the bottom floor of this was originally approved for storage, and half of it is a wood shop, 864 square feet is a wood shop for Headwall Construction, who is one of the tenants of Wright Gully LLC. Since we are not proposing any physical changes to the exterior, we requested a waiver from Section 175-15E4D as in David, which is existing and proposed contours. We requested a waiver from 175-15E4M as in Mary for soil and wetland delineation, and Section 173-21 for storm drainage. The justification is that we are proposing no physical site changes, so the existing and proposed contours will be unchanged. The drainage and soil and wetlands will not be altered, so therefore, there'll be no change or impact to them, and we felt that the cost of generating that information when there's not going to be any change was sort of the cost benefit ratio, the cost to the applicant versus the benefit for the review, didn't seem to make sense, and we thought that it was a reasonable request. The lot is serviced by Town Water and an on-site sewage disposal system, and I submitted to the town, I mean, in the application, a letter from Charles Land, a designer of subsurface sewage disposal systems, number 671, demonstrating that the lot, or the existing system, which has received both a construction and an operational approval, can support the proposed use. There was one comment in the plan review about floodplain and just seeking information, and I'm going to pass out now, as I get away from the microphone, a firm map that shows that this property is nowhere near a flood zone. The red cloud on this plan is the area of the site, and you can see that the blue shaded areas are the areas that are flood zones, so that is not an issue. Just to, for the benefit of the Board and the audience, as was stated in the introduction, this is at 130 Pine Hill Road. To orient the Board and the audience, here's Pine Hill Road, this is the Governor Wentworth School District SAU building here. This has been several uses over the past years. It was retail, and then it was an insurance building. The basement floor, as I said, was storage, now it's half storage and half workshop. The main floor is going to be a change in use to the governmental use, and that is going to be Lakeside Academy, which is presently renting space in the Stinchfield complex right at the, right at the top of Center Street, near Pickering Corner. And then the top floor is a three-bedroom apartment, and that has been since it was originally approved, and there's no change there. So the site plan aspect is for the change of use for half of the 864 square feet at the bottom, for the wood shop, and the governmental use is the main floor, which is the school. We've demonstrated, we submitted a letter in here from Steve Geier, the principal of the Alternative Education Program for Lakeside Academy, and as well as adult education. The students will be transported from the high school to here by a small bus, and also, because this is high school students, they can drive, some, with this alternative program, some work either before school or after school, because it goes in sessions. And so, there, we've provided for eight spaces, which is what the school has deemed that they would need. In the event that they needed additional parking, there's also available space on the SAU building, which is a property which is right immediately adjacent. The remaining uses only require three spaces, we have 12, with the calculations using the eight spaces that the school says that they need, and the other calculation by going through the chart of uses, it requires 11 and a half spaces, we've provided for 12. One handicap space in the center, right here, for the handicap ramp. I think that essentially, in a nutshell, that's the overview. I can, I can either wait until Matt goes through his plan review, or I can touch on some of the things he's raised in the plan review. Since this is a new process, I'm happy to do it however, however the Board is comfortable.
Sure, that's fine. I'm only going to touch on a few additional issues that Jim hasn't already addressed, and as you can see from my review, I felt the application was quite comprehensively prepared. As you can see within my review, we did seek a legal opinion on the status of the program in discussion here, and obviously, as a result of that opinion, we determined that in fact, school is an agent of the government and is exempt under zoning. I would add, though, that I think that all comments made tonight should be treated as advisory in the context of 674-41 related to the site, so as you make comments to Mr. Reins, they may be considered as advisory moving forward. You'll see within my notes related to waiver requests, that there are several other waivers that I feel might be necessary, and the reason I feel those are necessary is because they're simply not shown on the plan. Not that they are, that the site does not conform to these sections of the site plan regulations, but simply that they're not shown, and you'll see in the further sections of the review that I indicated that. One thing I did note is that, in the case of overflow parking, it was mentioned that the parking lot at the SAU building could be used, and I was curious if there was any intention of creating a shared parking agreement in that case, and I think Mr. Reins will be able to speak to that. And then beyond that, really, I just had a question about the signage, and whether or not any additional signage is proposed for the site as a result of the addition of the use, and beyond that, I had no real additional comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you want to just comment on the shared park?
Yeah, on the shared parking, we could, we could submit one, because it was a governmental use, and it's exempt from the requirements, and we don't think we're going to need it to begin with. You know, I'm happy to do whatever the Board is comfortable with, I think that it's, again, because it's exempt, you know, we just thought that that might be superfluous, but I'd be happy to do whatever, whatever the Board is comfortable with.
Okay.
In terms of the other, you know, if the Board feels they need waivers, I haven't, having been to the TRC for a minor site review in the past, I know that the presentation plans that are generally presented there for the actual use that needs an approval are significantly less comprehensive than this plan, so I, you know, and those usually, I haven't seen waivers requested for those kind of things, so I don't, you know, not to be argumentative, I just don't know that they're needed, but if that required to be a condition of approval, that we, that we submit some sort of a waiver for items that are not shown, even though there's no change, that certainly would be an acceptable condition.
My only concern, when I looked at Matt's list, I saw setbacks, and I thought, well, we can't waive a setback, but I had a discussion, it was, I guess that it wasn't shown on the site plan, and not granting a waiver, so...
Right, yeah, there's, I mean, there's no physical changes being proposed, so...
That was going to be my question, not building anything new, right?
Not, not buil-
We wouldn't be setting back anything to tell you to build.
Driving by, no one, yeah, driving by, you would not know anything had changed.
And I'm not sure I understand the waiver requirement for impervious service coverage. Are we digging up the parking lot?
No, we're not, we're not making any physical changes.
Right, it's just that the information wasn't shown on-
Exactly, exactly.
-the site plan is...
So would that constitute a need for waiver, or a need for clarification on the...
I think either would be appropriate. I think that's, I should have, you know, here I wrote, I feel that other waivers are necessary. In fact, it's more the second thing I wrote there, and that's, I recommend the Board discuss the necessity for these waivers, or perhaps seek clarification from the applicant. I don't feel that the waivers are necessary, but I wanted the Board to at least address these issues that are included in site plan but weren't specifically shown in this application.
Okay. What do you folks think?
For such a minor change of use, I don't think we need to go for waivers on all of these things. I certainly don't think we need to put the applicant to the expense of drawing up plans to show, or to obtain waivers for these, they may need a plan to show setbacks, but then again, they are exempt under 674, or whatever it is, 54, so they don't even really need to be here, except to say, this is what we're going to do, thank you very much, sir. So they're going a little bit further than they need to, I think that we could, sort of halfway to.
Is everybody okay with just regarding this? I mean, should it be a note on the plan? Would that be easy enough to note, not on the, that these things are not shown on the plan?
Well, maybe if you want to get down to going over each one of them, I mean...
I think that might be the best way to do it, too, because we are going to be discussing snow storage, waste, solid waste disposal, and those sorts of things as individual pieces of the site plan review. How they're going to deal with them will come up in the discussion, and it'll be part of the testimony, and we will be making our advisory decision based upon their testimony.
Couldn't, could we consider just indicating that other site plan document requirements, such as, is the following, determine not be necessary for this application, or wording like that? That would go into...
Be kind of like saying, what's already assumed? I mean, if they're exempt under 674-50 something or other, we don't need to say that they're exempt under...
Okay, well, we're doing a minor site plan.
Yeah, and in that case, perhaps they could be applied?
We're doing a minor site plan as a, maybe I'm using the wrong word, we're doing a minor site plan as a courtesy, we're not doing it as a requirement.
And there are no...
If we, the litmus test, if we were to say, we completely disagree with what Jim wants to do, what would the recourse be?
Well, he'd go ahead and put it-
He'd go ahead and do it anyways, under 674.
But he would not have-
Yes, but the site plan is different. I mean, the site plan is speaking to the other uses of the property, that's why we're looking.
Yeah, but with the change of use to expand the cellar to incorporate a, half of the cellar to incorporate a wood shed or woodworking operation, do we need to worry ourselves about impervious surface setbacks, solid waste disposal, and so on, other than, as more than a formality than anything else?
I don't feel that you need to concern yourself with these. To be quite honest, one of the only reasons I included these is because additional waivers had actually been requested by the applicant, so once I saw that additional waiver requests had been made, I then added additional pieces from the site plan review regulations that were also not included, sort of to parallel what the applicant had submitted.
Yeah, if I could just add, and maybe Kathy is probably at all the TRCs, I don't know, you know, when a minor site review is approved, and I think typically those, I don't recall any waivers being asked at the ones I've attended, but I've only been to a few. It usually is just a-
Maybe very rarely.
Right, if it's, if it's, I mean, all of the minor site reviews that the TRC approves, so if we step back for a minute and say that we're not talking about the governmental use, which is why we're here, we would have gone to the TRC, presented this plan, and based on what I've seen as sitting back or actually doing a minor site review with the TRC, these issues usually are, you know, it's just, okay, we're not making any changes, this is what the change of use is, you meet the parking requirements, approved, they generally don't have, you know, topography and wetlands, and percent lot coverage and flood stuff, all of that.
So that may be true, because we're not changing the exterior of the building, but when you change your use, what happens with fire code issues and things like that?
Well, they've got to adhere to all of that, you know, that's at the building permit level.
Sadi, Assistant Chief Sadi mentioned in the TRC report that whatever's done there is going to have to meet fire code, and that will be established at the time of construction.
I just saw that it was classified as daycare, and that has a different level?
No, I think the septic designer used it as, in his letter, he's classified for the flow under a daycare use.
Daycare.
But it's not a daycare, I mean, it's, you know, these are high school students generally that don't, don't function well in the traditional school sense, and they either through social issues at home, or something, they need to work to sort of help carry the weight, and they, they're either out working, a lot of them sometimes are, you know, they're working at Dunkin' Donuts, or they're working somewhere in town, or Hannaford's and Ospey, whatever, and then they make a trip over, and they do these classes online with some tutelage, and then they're off again, and it's, you know, it's usually, you know, a two or three hour thing, per session, or group. But in answer to your question, Vaughn, and, you know, they have to deal with the code issues at the town, but that's, you know, again, it's internal to the structure, there's no site changes or exterior changes.
Okay, so is the general feeling that we should, Mr. Reins has requested some waivers, so we need to consider those, at the very least, and I suppose we could say some other site plan requirements, but I'm not trying to make anything complicated for the applicant, or any additional cost or anything, statement.
I just offer a suggestion on, you know, still talk about these waivers here, you know, they have applied for one, two, three waivers here, then just a general comments stating, you could list out these other ones that Matt brought the attention to, just a simple statement, you know, due to the fact that there is no exterior change of the property at all, we don't, we don't see a need to have any waivers request for the setbacks, the pervious surface coverage, et cetera, et cetera, and then we address them in the minutes that they were talked about.
Right.
Don't need waivers, and we move on.
Yes, does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, that was, that was your suggestion, Kathy.
Excuse me?
That was your suggestion originally, yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so would somebody, since we're talking about waivers, then would somebody like to make a motion to that effect, so that it does get into the minutes?
I move that we waive all the requested waivers, because there is no change, external change to the structure.
And...
Do you want to spell out the waiver sections, and then the ones, and the extra ones that have been discussed?
Well, okay, zoning ordinance waiver 175-15E, 175-15E4, 173-21 drainage, and wetland delineation and contours.
And, okay, and then plus the setbacks, impervious surface coverage, accessway, parking dimensions, solid waste disposal area, floodplain areas, lighting and snow storage, is okay to add that?
As non-applicable to the application?
Yes, as non, as just, did you get that? We're granting waivers for the sites.
So, there was a motion in a second to grant the waivers requested by the applicant. As far as the other waivers, minor site plan review, isn't it board consensus, or do you want a separate motion saying that you don't?
We were just trying to include it in all, if that's okay with Vaughn and John.
Yes.
Yep.
As approved by consensus.
Well, I was just about to, we made a motion in seconds, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, waivers are handled.
Waivers are waived.
Okay.
Is our Honorable Secretary satisfied with the way this was turned out, or are there some serious reservations?
I think it's fine. I apologize for bringing those items up in hindsight.
Very good.
Okay, since the waivers are granted, this application is now determined to be complete.
I make a motion that we accept case number 2017-05 as complete.
Seconded.
Motion has been made in seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Moved. Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing, does any member of the public want to comment on this application? Okay, now, for the sake of the audience who may be listening or watching at home, and the Planning Board, all the neighbors have been notified, and that's part of this process, as well as the site plan, and really, our job is to approve, or not approve, the minor site plan application, and to issue some non-binding written comments relative to the conformity or non-conformity of the land use regulation, so, the Planning Board members have any thoughts on this? Any suggestions?
Questions for the applicant? Any change in lighting anticipated?
No.
No anticipation, change in lighting? Any anticipated changes in signage?
I have with me this evening two representatives from Wright Gully, and I don't know about the signage.
If you can stand up, if you can come up, introduce yourself and tell us your...
Jacob Dubey here. Hello, I'm Jacob Dubey, owner of Wright Gully LLC. I believe the sign, it hasn't been spoken to yet, but what I would assume is it's going to replace the sign that's always been there, which is above, there's a headwall construction sign now, I believe it's two foot by three foot, and above that, they're on the same sign post that already exists, there'd be another sign that's two foot by three foot, stating the schools there, although they don't currently have a sign in their current location, so I'm not sure if they will or will not. It hasn't been spoken to them yet.
Does the sign have to be two feet by three feet? Could it be two feet by two feet?
Well, they...
I know, that's what I'm asking.
Moved.
Okay, there's the answer. Two feet by three feet.
That's the simplest.
That's fine, that's fine, thank you. Just if you were two, if you were two by two, you'd be in compliance, and we'd be happier. But two by three, if it was required, that's the way it goes. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, basically, we've discussed the issue of the shared parking, and, I mean, the property is owned by the school district, the adjacent properties, so it doesn't seem that there is a need for anything more formal, unless somebody disagrees.
I'm just a little bit concerned about the fact that these are, some of them are high school seniors, they will, and some of them will be old enough to be able to drive to and from the location. If there are more than eight of them, where's number nine going to go, and if he's going to go into the overflow in the Governor Wentworth parking lot, it would be nice to know that in advance. would be nice to know that in advance.
How do you, how do you know that? How do you forecast?
Well, there's no other place for them to go but there. And they can't park on the road, so they kind of have to go there. Unless they get bussed over, yeah. But, you know, when my kids were college age, they preferred not to, school age, preferred not to take the bus if they didn't have to. So if you only have eight spaces and you have 50 kids in sight, I don't know what percentage of them are likely to be of driving age.
Well, they, they're all, they're high school students, so probably you could assume that half of them, but they, they're not there, all of the 60 students aren't there at once. They're there in waves, I believe.
How does that affect our deliberation?
It doesn't. It's part of our approval.
Right.
We have the right to make comments. And this is one of the comments that I would like to have in the minutes, that at least one board member has some concerns about overflow parking and the relationship. I mean, obviously, it's a Governor Wentworth operation, so they're going to feel kindly towards letting them park there, but I would just like to know that.
We did submit a letter with the application from Steve Guyer, the principal of Lakeside Academy and the Adult Ed, that says that Governor Wentworth will allow them to park over there.
Oh, okay. I must have missed that, I'm sorry.
And, well, I apologize, it wasn't a letter, so it might have looked informal, it was an email. It's, it was on Terry Tavoris' email header, and it says, "Greetings, Randy. This letter is to confirm that the GWRSD will provide transportation to the students by bus to the proposed new location at 130 Pine Hill Road. The maximum parking we would require is eight spaces, and in the unlikely case where we would need more parking, we will utilize the SAU lot. Sincerely, Stephen W. Guyer, principal of Continuing and Alternative Education."
I don't think we received that, Jim. Would you mind just giving me a copy of it?
Yeah, no, that I did not get that in the packet, so that's obviously the reason why I asked the question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I apologize, I...
Not your issue.
I have it in the, I have it in here.
Okay.
None of my concerns have been laid to rest.
All right.
Okay, so everyone is comfortable, and our issue has been addressed, and I think you did a good job of explaining the operation. So would somebody like to make a motion to approve the site plan application for 130 Pine Hill Road? And, let's see, we haven't done one of these in quite a while, and indicate that the planning board has reviewed this request in accordance with RSA 674:54, and does not have any additional written comments.
So moved.
Of this particular use. Okay, well, that's a motion.
It's a motion right there.
Okay. All right. Okay, a motion has been made in seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Did you get it?
I'm sorry, what are you voting on right now?
You're not making, you're not going to do the recommended...
We voted on the site plan and the fact that we were, had no comments for the non-binding.
There are conditions of approval?
I'm sorry. Yes, there were conditions. Okay. Okay, folks.
Thank you, Matt.
Just put that...
Thank you, Matt. With the following conditions.
With the following conditions. Why don't you go over the conditions, please?
Why don't we just have them one through five by reference in the planner's review?
That's fine.
That way we don't have to read them into the record.
Okay, well, it's nice for people to know what they, we usually read them.
Sure, I can read them.
Lovely.
Five conditions, the first being, the following plan, as amended to the date of this approval, is adopted by reference as part of this approval, and I will not read the actual plan name. But it's Plan One, Sheet One, the sheet that was provided to you as part of the packet. Condition number two, no modification to the exterior of the building shall be permitted in conjunction with this use, including outdoor storage, display, or sale of materials. Three, payment of all recording fees. Four, all federal, state, and local permits to be received by the town of Wolfboro. And five, all of the documentation submitted in the application package by the applicant and the requirements imposed by other agencies are part of this approval unless otherwise updated, revised, clarified in some manner, or superseded in full or in part. In the case of conflicting information between documents, the most recent documentation and this notice herein shall be generally, shall generally be determined.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we can close the public hearing, and I'll make a motion to amend the previous motions and include the conditions that were just read by the planning director.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, I think we completed it this time. Thank you very much.
Just a point of order, did you just vote on the motion to add the conditions? And have you acted on the formal motion?
Okay, well, we did act on the formal application first, and then we amended that. But if you're more comfortable, if people are, what do you folks think?
All set.
Was the original motion withdrawn, or did you simply amend it? And I apologize for being...
I just amended to add the conditions.
Okay.
But I'd be glad to make a...
Do you want to call for a vote on the original amendment, the original motion?
Yeah, I'd be glad to revote on the original...
Would you feel more comfortable if we...
Yeah, just, I just want to make sure the record's clear that the actual motion, not just the amendment was voted on, but the entire motion.
Right, well, we did, we took two votes.
We've got to get this right, we've got to do this right, you know it.
Okay, so this is for make a motion to approve Wright Gully LLC at 130 Pine Hill Road for a site plan review, and in addition, a non-binding review of RSA 674:54. The site plan has conditions that were just read by the planning director, and 674:54, the planning board does not have any comments for this use at 130 Pine Hill Road. So that is the motion. And do I now need to add that I'm withdrawing the previous two motions that we just made?
Are we?
I do not think so. I would just vote on that motion.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much, sorry for the confusion.
You have an approval on an approval.
Can you sign off on that? You figure, you feel that's good?
I'm glad.
Beg your pardon? Are you comfortable with that?
I'm very comfortable with that.
Do I have to do it again?
Thank you. No, no, you're doing great.
Want to recount?
Want to recount?
Time for it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You didn't listen to me in here, did we? They get the load done?
Okay.
Jim, see you guys.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment, but other than Mr. Goodwin, who is certainly welcome to make a comment, I don't see any other member of the public here. So we will move on to the work session. And the first item is our very favorite subject, the lodging forum. And we did hear from WECO today, and we do have, please, have the copy of the...
So I'm, yes, we did receive a copy of the lodging study. The WECO board voted to release the study to not just the planning board, but obviously inherently the public this morning at its board meeting. I've included just a piece because the document in total is something in the area of 450 pages. So rather than printing a copy for each of the board members, I could certainly provide you with a digital copy of it for your review if you'd like to come down to my office. But I provide just a brief snapshot from the beginning of that report for your review as a start. Additionally, I made the comments that were, I made the changes that were discussed at the last meeting to the other sheet that was handed out, and these are the forum purpose, planning board questions, and then some suggested, should say suggested, economic development committee questions. I just wanted to make sure that this was in parallel with what the recommendations were that were made at the last meeting as well.
So we have this, people can come into the office and see the whole document?
I can provide them with a digital copy as well. I simply, I'd like to avoid printing copies if possible.
Yeah, right.
And it's too large to send via email as well.
Okay, so is, do you have your hand up, Mr. O'Brien?
I do, Madam Chairman, I do.
Okay, well, please...
I was waiting for you to conclude your thoughts.
Go ahead.
So these are, these are what we discussed at the last, so can we take these back, or do we need to give you a flash answer right now, as to whether we think they're complete?
Nope, and because I wasn't able to prepare them before the meeting tonight, I wanted you to take them tonight and then take a chance to review them, and perhaps we'll finalize them at the next meeting.
And is this the complete list of questions that is going to be provided to the folks at the forum, or is the executive, the economic development committee planning on introducing questions?
I believe that the economic development committee will plan to introduce their own questions, and as you know, these questions were really only, they're based on recommendations provided by the planning board through you, so I would expect that they would have their own prepared in advance of the forum.
You expect that, and you've shared these with our good friends at the EDC?
I have not yet shared them because, again, these incorporate, the edits were just incorporated today.
Okay.
But the intent is to do that after the fact, yes.
So will we get a chance to see theirs as well?
I can certainly make that request. It's a matter of meeting timing, but I would certainly request that.
That would be good. And we don't have any redundancy or duplication, whichever comes first.
Okay, so you're suggesting you want this forwarded to EDC?
Oh, I have no objection to that. You, anybody? Oh, I thought that's really what we wanted to do.
Yeah.
You know, it would be, I want to keep this thing as open and transparent as we possibly can, and, you know, and maybe, you know, we get a look, see what, you know, what they're thinking about.
Just one additional thought on this, on the other side of the page, on the forum purpose side. I did review the changes that were proposed by the planning board, and I made them, with the exception of one change, and that was, I believe the board had wanted, based on my notes from the last meeting, the board had wanted the EDC recommendation to begin, or to serve as the opening statement here with an executive statement, but I didn't feel that read well, and as a result, I didn't include it in that location.
It was my, beg pardon, it was my idea to put it exactly where you have put it.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I think it's pretty good. I think so, too.
So just, you're referring to this as page one and this two?
Yeah, I guess I could have put page numbers. Let's call forum purpose page one, and the questions page two.
Well, that explains everything now, I am no longer lost.
So I wonder if that's the forum, is the forum purpose because they wanted 50 beds and we are questioning that, or is it to gather more information in general about everything?
I think that's up to the board. I mean, I would argue it's more the latter, but I think that certainly the impetus for this...
It seems like we're at the one question. I'm alarmed by the one question. I think it should be more open.
So if page one is the forum purpose, and we start off right away with the issue of 50 beds, I don't think, I don't think that's the forum purpose. I think the purpose of the forum is to gather information, and yes, that was a recommendation by the EDC, but it's part of the discussion. This is, I mean, this puts it right up there like the first question.
Wasn't that the reason why we're having this forum in the first place, to contratemp between the board and the EDC regarding the limit on hotel bed size? What brought us all together?
I thought it brought us all together, but not necessarily on just the one issue, just on all of the issues about lodging and the people who already own facilities in the town.
Would that not be then answered by, as Stacy points out, the following paragraph, and then the questions that are being presented to the members in attendance, planning board and EDC?
If, I see what you're saying, you're saying that it starts off with what the issue was that brought us together, but if you look down, it says the purpose of this forum.
I think maybe we should move the paragraphs.
Why don't we simply remove the two words forum purpose, and then just have this as a recitation of fact, as a historical recitation of fact? This is what happened. EDC has a wording, we're soliciting your input, here are the questions we'd like you to consider.
I would reverse the block, you know, the four paragraphs at the bottom, I would put those first.
Start it off with the purpose.
I don't, I don't agree that the reason we're having the forum is about the issue of 50 bedrooms. I think the issue is to involve all lodging interests.
To what purpose?
To what purpose is, we represent the whole town, including the business owners who are already in place.
Then why are they gathering here? What's the purpose of their gathering here?
Because we want their feedback on all of the questions.
Had the 50-bed issue not arisen, would we be holding this forum?
It wouldn't have, we, probably not, but I think that the reason that we're having it is because we needed more participants, because that issue came up in, out of a vacuum of the existing hotel, inn, and motel owners, as far as we were concerned.
We felt they had totally been left out.
Left out, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that. By removing the 50-bed issue from the front of the document, we subsume it into the general sense that we're discussing lodgings in town. We're diffusing it in some respects by not putting it up first. That might be politically a better way to go.
Why don't we just put it, put the first paragraph, the first from the Wolfboro up to here, and put it after the first, that paragraph, the purpose of this forum, and then enter that top section. That might, because it explains the 50 rooms, but it also, the paragraph that's written of the purpose of this forum is to solicit your input, and then put the 50-word thing. That might explain why we're having it, and this was one of the issues, and here's where we're going forward.
Would that work?
I'd feel much more comfortable with that, yeah.
And take the paragraph that starts the purpose of and move that up to the very front?
Right, just that one paragraph.
Okay, just the short paragraph, the purpose of this forum is to solicit.
And that would be the first paragraph?
Bless you.
The whole document.
That goes up to the top.
I actually wrote it this way today, and then I changed it because I had to match the recommendations that were made, so I'm glad that we're doing it this way.
I originally wrote it. Kind of.
Okay, so...
I mean, we could almost, you know, do the purpose paragraph, and then just say, you know, you know, some history or something like that.
I think it doesn't even need that. I think just moving that paragraph up to the top, it flows perfectly fine after that.
Okay, so the second paragraph will be talking about the 50 rooms.
Right.
And all of that, yeah, okay.
It would be paragraph two.
Okay, so Matt, do you have that?
Yes, I'm good on that.
Okay.
Aside from moving a couple of words around, is there anything that was added or deleted?
No.
What about the words that were inserted here that says we're going to get a concise three to five-page synopsis of the study?
Are you asking why those aren't included? My understanding is that we were...
If there was anything deleted, you said no, but those were deleted. Am I missing it, or is it in here?
It's not in there.
Okay.
Was that supposed to be in there?
I did not see that as a recommendation in the minutes, and I didn't have that in my notes. I remember we discussed that. That led to the discussion of whether or not we would receive a copy of the document itself, and resulted in more discussion, which was a bit more lively, and that's where we got to the point of, we want the WECO document, or perhaps this won't move forward in the format that you'd like. That's why that language was not included, and it's not included in the minutes, and it wasn't indicated within the minutes.
So just, so setting aside the minutes and all the, you know, reasons why it didn't find its way, and let's just pretend we're getting invited to this meeting. So we're just a person out there that is a hotel owner. You're getting, you read this document, and you read at the bottom, and it says they did some study, and...
and you read at the bottom, and it says they did some study, and they're going to ask us some questions. Wouldn't you want to get like a brief synopsis of what the study concluded, so that you'd be prepared to come to the meeting and be able to ask intelligent questions?
So, you're talking about, we'll share with you a factual summary?
So, is, is this?
Maybe it is already in here, maybe I'll just withdraw it, maybe it's the factual summary, is that we're, I thought you said like a three to five-page?
No, it's factual summary in your original text.
Okay, fine, I'll take it, I take it back. I didn't read it, I'll take it back, because we do want to provide a factual summary to this meeting.
Well, how about if, I mean, we're going to be sending out invitations, right?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, why don't we say that there is a synopsis of the hotel study available at the planning office, if they would like a copy prior to?
Well, I'd like to know if the board would be comfortable with me providing this.
I haven't, I haven't read this recently.
If the board could review it.
Maybe the question, Madam Chairman, would be for us to take this back, take a look at it, and maybe at the next session, come back and say, you know what, that's probably a good summary to put in the invitation.
Do we have the right to do that?
To edit the document, or?
Distribute this document around?
It's a public document at this point.
Yeah, you said that EDC released it for public consumption?
Well, the WEDCO released it for public consumption. And I just grabbed a section here, and what we could do additionally is cut it at the executive summary, and perhaps main, well, I wouldn't want to edit the document, but I will also probably clear it with WEDCO that we release a summary of it rather than the full study, so I'll probably run that by them, not the board, but the executive director.
That'd be good.
Okay, well, how do we want to deal with the issue then? I mean, because we've got a list of about 40?
Yes, and I did edit the list based on the conversation at the last meeting. From a planning department perspective, the next step is to create a mailing list, so we actually have email addresses, contact information for these folks. This forum purpose, although it's maybe visually appealing here, it, I think it needs to be put into some sort of more visually appealing flyer, and we'll send that to the owners and operators, and also the other stakeholders that are identified on that list, including the Board of Selectmen, Economic Development Committee, Chamber of Commerce folks. Include the summary of the lodging feasibility study, and then begin to really concrete the, I think, the setup of the meeting within this room moving forward.
Okay, so you're saying that you're going to include a summary of this document in the invitation?
I think we should.
Okay, all right.
The, the executive summary that they provided.
I think that's what we should discuss with WEDCO, and what the board should also make a decision on. I think you should start by reviewing this, and if everyone's able to get a copy of the complete document from me perhaps before the next meeting, we can make a final determination on what information goes out to those individuals and stakeholders.
Madam Chairman, since we're having a, a planning, we can include our colleague or in this conference.
Certainly.
You had an idea, I think the last time we talked about this, you said, there's a, just a ton of questions here, and this could get really confusing really quickly, and you had a, had some thoughts as to how we'd kind of?
The suggestion, this is Peter Goodwin, and the suggestion would be to put out a Survey Monkey to get initial responses, and then those responses could be made available, and then people could then add or comment to those responses, I think in a more efficient way than having everybody speak.
And Peter, would you, I don't know, I'm sure I know, would you want that Survey Monkey to be sent to the invitees?
Yes.
Or to the community?
I would say initially it would be sent to the invitees, because those are the people who would be initially wanting to talk about those issues.
And, and, you know, hearing his comment, I mean, this is a forum, we're going to have public hearings on this, it's not as if we're, you know, we're closing this thing down. It might be a good use of everyone's time, plus it'll provide anonymous feedback, which some people may want to give, you know, about some of these questions, and not disclose their particular organization or their particular company. So, I would, I would, I would like that, I like that idea. Let's get a certain, can we do a Survey Monkey?
But does that put extra burden on staff to sort through data that comes in from how many people are on the list right now?
Well, I think some, there's some of our stakeholder groups, so I think it encompasses quite a few people.
Like 60?
Yeah, I mean, I think that Survey Monkey does allow for quick compilation to an extent. I really would, as much as I would resist additional work, if possible, I would say that I don't want that to be the reason the Planning Board doesn't use a good idea.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not, it is additional work, yes, but is it, you're going to get all these comments back and then compile information, look at the information, and then discuss it again at the forum?
Well, I think what?
Or do a forum in the sense of you stand up with a whiteboard, write down thoughts? I don't know what, what the Planning Board was planning for, how these items were going to be discussed. Or is it just going to be Ann taking notes? Was it going to be, we've done forums before in the past with, that you have different areas where we each took a section and spoke about issue A, B, and C, and we would all take notes in that, and then address, so I don't know what format we were going for this for.
I think if I, if I could, the reason I warmed up to the suggestion is, I think you, you shared with us a perspective, there's 19 questions here, and let's assume our dearest friends come up with four more, or five, or six, that's 25 questions, and we have a forum that lasts two hours, and we have 40 people in the room, we'll never get through it. It'll just, it'll kind of, it'll swirl. And the council, which I thought was worth considering, and I know we're all going to do that, is if we could get some just baselining of information so that we could say, you know, this question here doesn't affect, you know, people aren't affected so much by it, and here's one that people kind of ganged up on or came to the point and said, this is an issue, and we'd use that as focus points, right?
So, these would be the questions on the Survey Monkey?
Yeah.
And these are all essay questions, which could run anywhere from a paragraph to several pages.
Yeah.
And this has to be processed by staff, questions organized, processed by staff, and the results tabulated in some form for the board to be able to use prior to the forum, which is not.
As a lodge owner, do town ordinances currently in place, feel be updated? I don't think that's a survey question, I don't think that's an essay question.
They're all essay questions.
Should the planning board limit the amount of total beds available?
Yes or no?
Either yes or no. I don't know, I, I like this idea.
If the, if the Survey Monkey ended up, the answers were limited to 100 words or less, and then with the invitation, if you want to elaborate at the hearing or at the forum, then you could do that, that may end up making it so that it's doable for the staff and also for anybody who wants to read what the responses are.
Yeah, Peter, I don't mean to be, to be argumentative, it's a good idea, I'm just concerned about one, staff time, and two, the time we have between now and then. If we're limiting to 100-word answer per question, and we have 25 putative questions, we have 2,500 words from each respondent times 60, and there's the guy who's got to process all of this stuff.
Or we, or we try to have a forum.
So, how, okay, so I, I've just really quickly read through this, and I think that the monkey in the room, the crux of the question, it seems like this concludes that what we need is a franchise hotel, and it's going to be like a Hampton Inn or a Holiday Inn Express. And what they start out, you know, the very short sentence is, you know, the Wolfborough Inn is the only other possibility. So, they don't even say, you know, what about upgrading what we have to meet that market demand? So, it's either this or this, it's either the Wolfborough Inn or the Hampton Inn that doesn't exist yet. So, I think that the whole forum should be focused on whether or not this community should work on developing its stock and its boutiquey small hotels, or if we want the big franchise hotel, it seems to be the crux.
Yeah, that's, that's the gorilla in the room, and I think if the forum will eventually focus on that particular issue, because it'll come right out of that executive summary.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't read it very long, but that's what they conclude.
I, I would feel, I share Stacy's feelings. I'd like the format of the forum to be open-ended, maybe two, two and a half hours if we can stand that, and let whatever comes up out of the forum discussion be the way we are directed, rather than processing predigested information from a Survey Monkey done online.
So, I guess that, to do the survey, to do an online survey and get out to just the 60 invitees of the, that we're sending this to, how, how do you all see the forum being presented, question, answer, or present the, present this document and then come up with, which could be beneficial to get to the point of it, like you said? So, is there time enough for this survey to get out to those 60 people?
I'm concerned about the Survey Monkey and that, okay, suddenly now we have, you know, 500,000 facts to digest and figure out what they mean, and that may be a complete distraction from the real crux of the issue.
Yeah, I think if, if, if the attendees have a copy of the executive summary and a copy of the questions that are to be asked, they're not ignorant, they're business folk in a particular industry, they'll see that gorilla in the room, and that will be the issue that will emerge, or there will be several issues that will emerge, will be the principal issues that most attendees in the room are going to be concerned about, and those are the ones that we should be addressing.
And I know you're, I know you're saying this, and, and I really, I, I'm sorry about that. I want this to be a, I want this to be civil, I want this to be constructive, I want to learn from this, I don't want to have a yelling match, I don't want to have a, I don't want to have any of that stuff, and frankly, because we, we learn nothing, we just, we just, we go farther apart. And so, and I'll, I'll accede to the wishes of, of the team here. I think putting structure in any conversation, having facts at the, at the ready, and confining the conversation to the facts on hand will always give you a good output. You may not like the answer, but at least you get an output. If you go in and you kick, kick, and I'm going to, I won't use the S-word, if you kick it around a little bit, you're going to have a goat rodeo. That's a very visual thing, it gets a little silly. So, I argue for a little more structure. I would be, I would not be offended if somebody said, we're going to have five, five hard questions. I would, I would, I would say, take whatever ones I wrote off the table.
I think, Paul, if, if I may, I don't think anybody here on this board tends to come in with loaded pistols, ready to go to war, with anybody who's coming in as an attendee. I don't, I don't anticipate any potential difficulties in that respect. I think that the issues that are going to come up are the ones that the attendees feel most strongly about, because they're going to be speaking to them, and they're issues that we may not be aware of, because we're not in the hotel of your business. I think they should be telling us the facts that we need to be dealing with, we shouldn't be trying to prestructure the forum.
Brad?
Yeah, I just had a thought here, maybe I'm really oversimplifying part of this here, but if we put the Survey Monkey out, we have a list of 19 questions right here in front of us, and made it as simple as, so we don't get a whole lot of, you know, wordy answers that Matt has to go through and the staff and stuff, have each of these people pick out five topics that they think are the most important, and that way we're just looking at a list of, you know, priority of these 60, however many we send out, and see which ones come out on top, and kind of have that be the focus of the, of the forum. Make it much simpler for Matt and the staff to analyze, and gives us kind of a focus of what these people want to talk about ahead of time, and then kind of gear it towards that, you know?
I, when I look at these questions, I'll suggest that if it's a Survey Monkey that goes out, the question, do you, lighting, noise, pack, parking, sign notices make sense to you and your business? I think it's going to be yes or no answer. And so, I don't think that in, in many cases, you're going to have anything more than just getting a poll from these individuals, and then you can end up seeing what they think are the issues. So, I mean, I, I read through these questions, and three-quarters of them are going to be yes or no answers.
Well, all the attendees are going to have these questions in advance, so they will have all read over them, and some, I presume, will resonate with them.
Right.
And they'll, and if we have 50 people, some, perhaps two or three of them will be resonating with more than, with the majority of the people, and those will be the issues that we would need to be focusing on. I, I personally prefer to let it happen organically in the room, sort of approach.
Well, I wonder about just the question about, you know, would you prefer to see a franchise, national franchise hotel in this town, or would you rather see multiple smaller boutiquey-type hotels, or hotels of a size 50 or less, you know? Or hotels similar to the hotels you see in Meredith? And when are we having that Meredith Hotelier come?
The 21st.
That'll be interesting. Or, that's before this forum?
He's coming to the, I thought he was coming to the EDC meeting.
Which I believe they're, they are on the 21st this month. I'll, I'll check that right now, though.
Okay, but he's.
There was some confusion about that last month, so I'll check that right now.
Who's this?
But he's coming to arm?
No, no, he's coming only to EDC.
I mean, it would be interesting, because they don't have franchise hotels. They have a few with over 50 rooms, you know? That's not even an option on the table right now, you have one or the other.
Right. Okay, so you want to add one, another question, right?
I, I would frame questions more, I, I don't care about the box store answer, because I don't think that's what we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
But I would frame things like, would you rather see independent hotels such as you could find in Meredith, or would you rather see a national chain in our town? Now, what would suit our town better? Questions like that, because I think it's character that I'm concerned about.
Remember who the audience is, existing hotel owners, so it's, the question is, do you want somebody to come in here much bigger than you, or put you out of business, or are you just comfortable with where you're at? That's really the question you're asking.
You're asking me?
Do you want somebody to come in here and just squat on you like a bug, or are you comfortable with what you got?
Right.
That's.
Or, you know, can, do we think we need to upgrade what we have to fill that gap that seems to be what is suggested?
I think those, those, to me, those are the salient questions of the forum, and I think they are inevitably going to come out in the process of the forum, because they will all have read that executive summary, and it's clear that suggests a franchised hotel here in town, and they're going to, if they are in the business, they're going to be worrying about their livelihoods if this is a recommendation that the Planning Board isn't in any way considering.
One of the things talked about last time was getting the hotels here in town on the web, as in Expedia or whatever. And if a big-box place comes in, they're obviously going to be there in Expedia, and so therefore the, you know, it, it may ultimately be, if that happens, you're going to need to have real encouragement for the existing motels to.
Up their game.
Up their game.
Oh.
But that's going to be something that is definitely going to change the, the way things go, and so.
And lots.
And that's, you know.
Lots of small towns have their economic, not EDC, but maybe their, losing the, the other.
Chamber?
The Chamber, thank you, thank you, I only had three hours of sleep. The Chamber of Commerce has a list of hotels, they direct you to all the hotels, I mean, or, or the town, I mean, now we have a town website, I just tried to sign up my business just to see how it would work, I'm in the process, there's a process. But I, why can't we encourage all the innkeepers in town to get on at least the town website so that they have an engine?
Yeah, it's been done.
It's been done.
You know, I think.
Well, maybe not enough, I mean.
Yeah, I don't think it's been done. You mean the thing in the electric bill?
Yes.
I mean, we should make a point.
Yeah, I, I think we should emphasize that.
Peter's, Peter's point is, is well-taken, and whenever I go away, I don't go to the Chamber of Commerce at the town, I go to Expedia or TripAdvisor and read what other people have said about what's available in the area I'm going to stay in. So, I think our hoteliers need to get on those, those two sources for sure, if they want to get any kind of exposure.
I think the, I think the EDC is on to something, and I, I give them credit for this, I mean, they did make an effort to try to get businesses in, enlisted on the town's website. I agree that, you know, and just ask us all, when we travel, do we, do we log into the town website to try to figure a hotel? town website to try to figure a hotel where we want to stay? No, we, we normally go to a TripAdvisor or someplace like that. If a current owner, operator in our town hasn't taken advantage of that, I mean, that's an, that's an issue for them to deal with.
Yeah.
It's a competitive issue, and the town and the EDC have been, I think, generous by saying, "We'll help you out," but, you know, but I mean, how far do you want us to go?
It's really on them.
So, that's point one. Point two is, I think the, I think the unspoken, you know, moose here on the table is, we either have a supply problem, a demand problem, or a product quality problem.
Bingo.
I will put the moose on the table, and, and I'm not here to, to, to make, cast any, you know, commentary on that. And if you read the body of the rest of the study, there's, it kind of, you, you don't have the study, but if you read it, you'll, you'll get a, you'll get a little whiff of that in the, in the document. And I think what we need to do is, again, in a very nonjudgmental way, we're not here to cast aspersions on anybody, maybe we just put on, do we have a supply problem, a demand problem, or do we have a product quality problem? And, and by the way, it doesn't mean you run a crappy operation, it just may, may mean that you don't have the, the, the types of rooms that people who want to come and stay here during certain periods will want to purchase. That, that's all, it doesn't mean you're running a crappy business. We need to suss that out, or at least the EDC needs to suss it out, and then we need to decide whether, and what we do about the zoning issue.
Right, I, I agree with Paul, I mean, I think we're here to discuss the zoning issue, and how, if we, where we're allowing these, if we're putting a room cap on them, we, we can't be here to hold their hands to make business decisions in their advertising and what kind of rooms they have, but at the, but at the same time, you know, there, we did discuss with the EDC before, that sometimes the issue is not that there is not enough rooms, but we have peak times-
Right.
Where there's not enough rooms. There may be enough rooms across the board, but at those peak times, there's not enough, because, like we discussed, there are times when people are like, "Yeah, closed, because we don't have enough business." So, it's also, okay, so then let's bring more people in consistently. So, you know, it's a lot of a business plan also.
Right.
Okay.
So I guess we need to, oh, sorry.
Yeah, let's, so how do you think we should proceed? Von wants some other questions added to the-
Yeah, I, I think, well, there's, you know, the franchise hotel question is somewhat in here, but I think, just never, I think we should not focus on the rooms, you know, the cap of the rooms, but would you be in favor of allowing a franchise hotel in Wolfboro? If not, what would you prefer, you know? Because that's the thing that's left out of this, I think.
Well, in that particular case, I mean, Paul's right.
Yeah, we have-
If I, if I'm running Clearwater Lodges, I'm not gonna want to have a Hampton Inn in town, because they're gonna be major competition for me, so my answer is probably gonna be assumed to be no. That kind of question, however, is, I already said, gonna come out in the forum, because it is the gorilla in the room.
Well, if everybody reads this-
Yeah, and those of them who come in here not having read that, just looking for a way of killing a couple of hours, it's on them.
If you read it, speed read it, you get the idea.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's clear, so, I mean, that is, that's gonna be the issue, that's gonna be one of the major issues to be dealt with in the forum. The other one is, what can the planning board do to make the hoteliers' business more productive, more profitable? Is there anything that we can do with our regulations that the town would want us to do, to make it easier for them to do business?
Allow them in more areas.
That was, that was the question I asked way back when, and said, you know, before you ask us to change this, you really should ask the public how we're doing.
Yeah.
And that's why I didn't put that question that you, you posited.
But we're gonna hear that in a big way.
We're gonna hear it.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna hear that in a big way.
Now, by the way, you know, we can debate the data, the data in there actually is good data.
Yeah, but it's national data.
It's data.
It's not small-town precious little gem data, really.
I think maybe, I mean, this thing is scheduled for the middle of April, so we need to-
Is that a sacrosanct date?
Yes. We have set a date.
Yeah, we've set a date for this.
Third week in April, and so we need to decide how we want to proceed.
Yes.
I think we had a plan.
I think we should just, even if we're, we don't know the answer, we don't know how it's gonna go, I think we have to see what everybody's going to say, just keep an open mind.
Yep.
Right.
I think we should stick to the plan we already had, these are the questions, we have the executive forum, send them out to the attendees. Schedule the, the forum for April, whatever the heck it is, walk in the room and be prepared.
Okay, so then that leads me back to the idea of the survey sent out to the sixty participants. We send it out to the sixty participants, and we, then we, as the planning board, need to figure out, how are we going to present what we're doing?
Right.
Are we gonna do, you know, so, here's, here's what we've come up, are we gonna do big whiteboards in different sections of, like, here are comments, so everyone can see comments? How would we proceed with that information? And are you gonna do, then have extra comments? I, I guess, I'm just very questioning which way are we doing the forum? Are we just having people come up and talk, or is it going to be?
Well, we haven't gotten that far, because maybe we haven't even gotten the thing out of the door.
Understood, but then, I, but I think that depends on if you're sending out a survey or not, and want to take that information in. I mean, that's what we need to decide tonight, are we sending these questions out to the sixty?
Right, that's what I'm trying to, trying to get to.
Are we not gonna get these answers for these questions in the forum, or do we, are we expecting them to reply to these questions prior to the forum, then we walk in with a bunch of answers? I thought it, these were ways of people, to help people think, when, when they came in the forum, they would have ideas to present.
That's what I thought we had decided at the last meeting, that this was gonna be sent out, things that you might want to ask questions about, I thought that was what we had decided.
And then we have to follow up with what Stacy said, how are we gonna, when the forum starts, how are we gonna handle what comes back from everybody?
Okay, but I'm trying to, and get it, get us all to agree on how we want, what we want to send out, because we've got a couple different ideas here, and, and it needs to get done, soon, so, in order for people to get this on their calendars.
Okay, so if we take the approach where we send out this lodging, not, not the analysis and disclaimer, but the executive summary, and we have just questions for thought, I guess if, if we just somehow say things to think about, you know, for discussion, then we'll have people who come in and possibly take turns. How we digest that, I think, you know, I don't know how we digest that, we have to listen. We don't know what they're going to say. I think if it's a survey monkey, these are essay questions, how do you deal with that? You either have to say, you know, one to five, you know, it's a four, or three, or two, I, I don't know how you get sixty essays on each one of these and digest that.
I agree, I agree with you.
Can you make a decision on the survey, please, right, right now?
Wait, that's, that's what we're trying to do.
Right, but I think that we're, we're talking about format and survey or not, and I think-
Okay, well, that's what I was trying to do, and that's what I just said, that we have to decide on what we're gonna send out to people.
I move that we, we consider, not consider, I move that we adopt a survey monkey, survey tool, with the understanding that we take these questions and go through with one quick edit to make sure that they're not essay questions, but rather, you know, multiple guesses. That's my motion.
Well, I would make an opposite motion.
Yeah, I, I can't second that one, I'm afraid.
My motion would be that we send out-
You can't make a-
Well, let's, let's, let's see if there's a second for Paul's.
I'm unseconded.
Okay, okay, go ahead, there's no, no second.
Sorry, buddy.
I, I move that we send out a list of questions, topics to think about, and bring, you know, your ideas to the meeting, with the executive summary attached.
Second to that.
Okay, and that's pretty much what we had decided at the last meeting. That's why we came up with this, this list of-
You want to vote on that?
But, but you're saying to describe them a little differently, rather than saying planning board?
I can develop some content.
Yeah, I don't think we have to segregate them, I think just topics-
Right, right.
You know, to think about, or, you know, they can ignore them. I'd, I'd like to get rid of the box store one. I mean, I'd, and I'd like to separate the bed number from the franchise hotel question, because I think those are two distinct things.
Okay, somebody, Mike, you seconded Von's motion.
I seconded the motion.
Yeah, okay.
We're voting on just sending this, this, and a summary of thoughts, questions, I think, for talking points, and this via email to the forum.
Plus hopefully any questions that the EDC is gonna send to us with diligence and dispatch, so that we can get this out in a timely manner.
I mean, we, we may send hard copies as well-
Okay.
-to several locations, I think we'll probably do both, but-
Okay. Great.
Okay, well, is, is this doable?
Yes.
What we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, a, any other comments on the, sort of the basic format?
So, I, I would just suggest that this-
Can we go ahead and vote on it, and then, oh, okay, okay.
We may, I got a little bit confused, and I apologize for not following as closely as I should have. What format are we sending this piece of paper in?
Email and hard copy, and Matt is gonna review the question, he's going to make it more-
He's not gonna say planned, planning board questions.
But are the questions gonna survive the, the edit?
Yes.
They're gonna go through as stated here.
Well, well, we were just, you wanna vote on the motion, or do you wanna keep discussing the-
No, I just wanted to find out what the motion said.
I'd amend my motion, and my motion amended would include what I said before about sending out all the questions for thought, but I would send out the purpose letter as a cover in the reverse direction that we sent it, the executive summary second, and the list of questions without planning board versus EDC subtitles as three for, for thought, promote thinking about what our discussions will be.
Fine, fine, that's, that's, if that's a motion, I can, if it's a new motion, I can second it, if it's the old motion, I already did second it.
Okay, all right.
I think it was the same one.
Well, let's, let's vote on the motion.
Fine, let's vote on the motion.
Just, just, do you have some comment?
No, I just said, let's do that, let's vote.
Okay, all right, all in favor of Von's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, okay, all right, now, are there changes that people want to, want to make to this document, suggested changes?
I would scratch the box store question.
Yep, yep, right, no, you've, okay, got that.
And I would, I like, I think questions-
Does everyone agree on that? You all okay with that, removing number eight?
I'll, I'll cry a little bit, but I'm sure I can live with it.
Okay.
And ten, I would turn into nine, and I would scratch seventy-five to a hundred, and just ask about franchise hotels.
Would you be in-
That was yours, too.
And then ten, I would make the fifty-room cap question.
I'm getting dragged over the coals here.
Let the record show that, uh, my good friend put in eight, nine, and ten.
Let the record show he's being very big in allowing them to be changed.
Would you support the removal of, you're saying what for nine, Von?
Okay, so, the new eight, I guess, would be, would you be in favor of allowing a franchise hotel in Wolfboro?
Why can't we just go to number nine? What are we changing to number nine?
Well, because I think that the fifty-room thing is, comes, the number of rooms is more specific, it doesn't matter, it doesn't, the order's not that important.
Changing them anyways.
Okay.
So what are we doing to number nine?
I'm just saying, ten becomes eight.
Ten becomes eight.
And it just says, would you be in favor of allowing a franchise hotel in Wolfboro?
Is there a reason why you want to get rid of the seventy-five to a hundred-bed?
Because that's two separate questions.
They're saying a franchise can be any size, is what they're getting at.
Just in general, would you want a Holiday Inn, or do you want a personalized hotel?
Minor change, I can live with that, that's fine with me.
Okay, and number nine, what do you want to do about that?
Leave it.
Would you support the removal of the fifty-room?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so you want that to stay the same, okay, any other questions?
I have a comment, that I would take out the, the word franchise.
I agree.
Because that is a very, very pointed thing, that's like saying, would you like to have McDonald's in Wolfboro, or would you like to have whatever?
It adds bias to the question.
It totally does.
Yeah, but if you read this executive summary-
Yes, but these are questions that the board is asking, and so if you're saying that it's a seventy-five to a hundred-bed hotel, that's different than saying labeling it a franchise. Now, people may imagine it's franchise, but I would take that word out.
Well, if we were moving-
No, I took out the seventy-five to a hundred, I just want to know how they feel about franchise.
I think our, I think our colleague is right.
We can't do anything-
We're removing-
As hotel comes in here, we can't say we don't want it, we can say we don't want it, but we have to deal with it.
And we have seen evidence in other towns in different states of franchises that you can't tell they're franchises, is if you have architectural standards, and they're gonna come in and comply with your standards, you're not gonna know that they're a franchise.
Unless it, that's-
And whether they be a twenty-room franchise, you can come in and have a, you know, A, B, C franchise hotel here, and you'll never know what's-
So there's a good, another question. Another question is, if a franchise comes in, do you, is it okay to have franchise look like your typical highway franchise, or should it be modified?
We talked about architectural standards already.
That's gonna, that's gonna be coming out in the forum.
Wouldn't it be better to put it in the, the positive, if a franchise hotel came in and complied with architectural standards?
Sure, yep.
Um, just so we're not prejudging.
We don't have any architectural standards, don't, don't-
We can be budget-y.
Wouldn't we want the forum attendees to tell us that if, we would, they would like to see a franchise hotel have to abide by some sort of architectural standards, get it from them?
Yeah.
That's a different way to put it, that's a whole different question.
These are food for thought.
Yeah, and, and there were, for removing planning board questions, we're not attributing them to the planning board, we, why can we not ask, would you be interested in having a franchise hotel come in? Because that's one of the things I'd like to get, and it's one of the things I think my colleague here was interested in eliciting from the attendees at this forum, how would they feel about something like that coming into town?
Well, and maybe following up that franchise question with, if a franchise does come in, do you think it, you know, we should require special architectural standards, or are we prepared for the generic model?
That's a, I think that's one of those.
Okay, yes, Paul.
Actually, what I really, and thank you for saying, but really what I want to know is, I want to know from these folks, what we can do as a town, consistent with what our friends at the EDC have said, which is to get obstacles out of the way, what can we do as a town to improve their odds of being successful?
To a point.
That's what I want to do.
True.
And, and right now, and the reason I say that is, right now, a franchise, or Les Otten, or somebody could come to town, and by exception, could build a facility in this town, could do it, boom, done. And, and what I, what I would really like to do is move the conversation towards what can we do as a community to improve the chances of making us competitive in our own right? Now, all this other stuff, which is important, the hotel study is important, and I give credit to people wanting to do this, it's exogenous to the question. So asking somebody, what would you think about, whether it's franchise or not, is, is, is almost like a finger in the eye, it's a, it's kinda, and so I really like to say is, what are we doing that's getting in the way of you adding more room stays? If, if anything, we may not be doing anything, and they say, you know, "I'm happy, I, I close in September, October, and I'm happy, and I don't want any more room stays." That would inform us that if the EDC is right, and we need more room stays, then maybe we need to, you know, do other things.
You know, I agree with you, because I had forgotten the audience just a moment ago. The audience is hotel, inn, and motel operator, so obviously-
Well, this is gonna be open to the public.
Yeah, but I think that predominantly, people who are interested will be the hoteliers.
Well, you may get quite a few interested citizens, because enough people know about this fifty-room thing.
We, we have a-
We hear from those folks.
We have a concern that is broader than just making it possible for those who are interested to make money in the hotel business, to make money in the hotel business any way they feel they can. We have an, we have a, somewhat of a broader remit, so we are, our interests are more than We have an, we have a somewhat of a broader remit, so we are, our interests are more than just allowing a big-bed hotel to come into town because someone feels that they can make a go of it. We have to think of, is it going to fit into the town? How are the people going to feel about it? Where is it going to go? Is it going to become an eyesore? We have to be concerned about those sorts of things. We are after all the planning board. So, I think, fine, what can we do to get out of your way so you can make more money and we'll all be happy? That's a great idea, but at the same time, we have a responsibility to the other citizens in town who may not want to look at a Holiday Inn out their back windows. No, I agree. All right, so... When I said, how do we take care of the folks that are already here? So, what I don't want to do is to have the emphasis on the EDC's remit. I want to have the emphasis on the planning board's remit, part of which is the EDC's remit.
Okay, Matt, do you have enough information to...
I'm still not clear on existing questions nine and ten. Sorry.
I think nine, we were leaving as is, and ten is the one that we're having a discussion on, whether we should take out the seventy-five to a hundred...
Right.
...a hundred-bed or take out the word franchise.
Right. What is the board's resolution on that?
I personally would think that, would you be in favor of allowing a seventy-five to a hundred-bed hotel in Wolfboro? And then put in another question saying something about size and complying with architectural design guidelines? Or something over a certain square footage, such as that? That would maybe take care of the...
So what?
If you're putting in a big box store, it doesn't have to be a hotel. If I'm putting in a big box store, we go back to that, that discussion of, if I'm putting in something over a certain square feet, it has to comply with designs, guidelines.
Couldn't we put both thoughts in new question eight? Would you be in favor of allowing a seventy-five to a hundred-bed hotel if it met some required architectural standards?
We had that sort of assumed in number four.
I think that's two questions.
Yeah, if you look at number three, and three and four, we have architectural guidelines kind of covered there. I threw in the seventy-five to a hundred-bed franchise hotel based partly on the executive summary and partly on the fact that they were referring, recommending a franchise of some sort. I was kind of interested to see how the people in the room would feel, and I wanted the EDC to hear the responses when they were presented with a question about, would they, how would they feel about having a franchise hotel in town?
Okay, group, how do you want to proceed?
Remove the seventy-five to a hundred-foot, hundred-foot, remove seventy-five to a hundred-bed wording and just have allowing a franchise hotel in Wolfboro.
And, and, make it on the other side of the coin, as Mike's explaining this, is there any harm to asking that question? Because then you may have someone sitting out there and say, you know what, if a franchise doesn't look like a franchise, I'm fine with it fitting. If it fits into the design character of our town, why not? Someone could say that. Just putting that out there, different ways that one could go. You never know what you're going to hear from people. This isn't saying, no, we don't want it, but if it is, and the other thing to remember from a planning perspective is that your rooms are going to be controlled by how big of a footprint you're on also. Unless you're coming in buying three adjacent properties, combining them, and then building a big hotel.
Except change it to eight.
Except change it to eight.
Yeah.
The wording for seventy-five to a hundred beds.
Yeah.
It gives the people the dynamic, the field, seventy-five to a hundred, that's a franchise.
Okay, so could, just to make this logical, could we take then the architectural part and put it right after that?
I don't think it matters.
I don't think it matters.
You don't think it matters at all?
No. I, I think you guys are right, ten should stay as it is. And these are discussion points.
Except change it to eight.
Change, ten becomes eight, nine stays the same.
Is everybody okay with that? Okay.
Good to hear, Matt.
Can you imagine if I had done twenty-five questions?
No.
No.
I mean, as it is, if it's number eight.
As it is, it just changes to eight. We went around on that one.
Okay, Leanne. We know we're making progress.
Leanne and Matt are going to be like...
I want, I just, I wonder on four, whether or not we should get into creative uses of energy and materials. It just, I just think that our focus here is going to be complicated enough. Just wonder why.
I'd like to think of just see where the decisions lead.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody thinks about it, find if they don't bring it up.
I think that was my third glass of pinot noir there. This was just one person's brainstorm in like twenty minutes or so.
We should have one right now.
Twenty-five minutes, so.
Okay, so, I think we have consensus, and let's move on to Stacy's issue.
The format, right?
Well, I mean, we need to know how, what we're going to do, how we're going to do it. Yes, sir.
I know I'm just a stick in the mud.
No.
No.
Let me just get right in the mud, all right?
Okay.
So, I think, I think there is, and maybe it's in the next, our next session, but I think this is an important, this upcoming meeting on April 24th. It's very important. The sequence of events leading up to this meeting will ensure that it is successful, meaning how it's organized. I mean, our colleague Stacy made commentary about how it's run, who is speaking, how we message it in the press. Is it, is it planned that we're going to have an opportunity with sufficient leave time to make course corrections to look at how this hall is going to get laid out? Or are we going to be kind of just at the firewall and here it goes?
No, no, we, no, we need to talk about the, how we want it.
When's that going to happen?
That should happen at the next meeting, in my opinion.
Our next meeting?
Detailed review of what the process will be for the forum.
And will our friends from the EDC be here?
They could certainly be invited.
I, I, I'll leave it to them.
They will be at the next meeting, actually. We'll have our joint meeting.
Is it a good idea to have them here so that we can kind of pitch it back and forth and get a good idea of how it's going to flow?
Yeah.
Certainly.
I just ask them, thank you.
Okay, all right, so we'll determine that at our next... All right, everybody comfortable with that?
Was that Stacy's issue?
Are there any ideas right now?
What?
Sorry. Does anybody have any ideas about this right now, though, before we simply kick the can to the next meeting?
You mean for the forum?
Yes.
Like I was discussing?
The format.
Well, I actually would love to hear your thoughts on it. I mean, you, you do...
Yeah, I mean, I...
...this all the time, so I'm sure you have some great ideas.
Well...
As a planning board, we've done many different, different ways of doing the thing.
Well, I think we should have some sort of PowerPoint report to get things in perspective for at the beginning.
I mean, I have some ideas, but this is my last night.
Well, then go ahead.
Oh, yeah, go, yeah.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, I mean...
I wouldn't forget.
Close the door, she ain't getting out.
I mean, we had discussed previously having brief presentations by both the planning board and EDC regarding what they're doing relative to this issue, what we're currently working on as part of the work plan and other things like the master plan. The idea, I think, then, was to open it to some format of discussion. I tend to think that some sort of rotating station exercise won't work for this, won't work well, because we have a set of questions and we want to get through those questions. I also think that saying that a strict sort of question-by-question approach might not work well either. I think it needs to be an open, and I hate to say it, but relatively unstructured discussion, but still attempting to hit all of these points during that discussion. Frankly, I think a round table would be nice. I don't think that will work. But I think it, it really can't be a keynote speaker speaking to the audience. I think it needs to be the planning board sort of moderating but leading the discussion with input from the EDC and also the fellow attendees. So, as close to a round table as possible. I'm thinking about the setup. I'm not sure how we'll achieve that, but I think that's what I'm thinking. Makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Does anyone have any ideas on how to achieve the round table feel?
Well, I think actually these chairs break apart.
Yeah.
So, I think...
I mean, if you actually want to do, yeah.
We actually made, we could still have, you know, the planning board, I don't know, maybe the EDC, up in front as of the top of the loop, but have the rest of the chairs also in that big shape.
Horseshoe or something?
Yeah.
We've got Peter to be concerned about, and we have microphones to be concerned about too. So, we can't have them spread clear throughout the room.
I mean, there's a certain point people are going to have to get up unless we can pass them.
We have microphones that move, yeah. I mean, they're remote microphones, so if we can have somebody, I could certainly be out there too to pass the microphone around.
Okay.
I like the idea of a sort of a horseshoe.
Right, yeah.
I think how we organize the chairs and whether we have decaf coffee and stuff like that in the meetings is an important conversation. The meeting conduct is what we should really get focused, we should get focused on how the meeting will be conducted. I think that the chairman of the planning board should be the ringmaster.
Well, and I don't think we should have long speech. We want to hear from people.
Right.
Ta-da, I agree.
I think it should be...
And I don't think there should be long presentations in...
Ta-da.
I was thinking five minutes perhaps from, from you and maybe from the...
I'm quicker than him.
Two minutes.
I think, I think, I agree with you, Kathy. This is, we will learn a lot when our ears are moving and not our lips. So, the conduct of the meeting is so important. How is it going to be organized from a, who leads the conversation? How do we move the conversation through the agenda? Because it's going to be controversial, and it's going to be funny, and it's going to be not so funny. They're going to, all of these dimensions are going to be there. Who is the leader here that's going to take us through that?
And I think the planning board chair should be the leader, but with that said, though, I think planning board members and members of the EDC should be prepared to stimulate the conversation in the event that the attendees are not willing to provide information immediately.
Through the chair.
Through the...
Not direct, not direct, I think if every member here and all members of the EDC feel empowered to be able to direct questions at the attendees as issues come up, you're going to have people talking over each other.
Yeah.
And just going to be running into conflicts. Questions should be addressed to the attendees through the chair in the case of a conflict. If there's not a natural conversation going on, just let it happen.
Okay.
Otherwise, through the chair. That way, we have some control. The agenda should be the meeting itself, nothing else, just...
Can we have it informal enough so that when somebody makes comments, that when someone has a question up here at the table, that that question can be answered?
Well, that's where we rely on you.
Okay.
Your judgment says this is an informal conversation.
Back and forth.
Just let it go.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Check where they check with the planning board, and then they say, what is your answer, and then back to the EDC, no?
I think, I think the chairman of the planning board, rules and procedure generally tell us, and I think they're smart. They tell us that when we have joint meetings, normally and customarily, planning board leadership is the bandleader. I think if a question comes to the planning board chair, planning board chair might pitch it to, you know, a person over here, pitch it to whomever. Let it run like that. Yeah. It maintains, it maintains a, you know, kind of semblance of order, doesn't sound too stiff and stuffy. And I think Kathy does a great job here at kind of moving things along to get them done, so.
And you'll be the one to pitch the question to the program.
Okay, okay.
And we'll have, we'll have the backstop with Matt out in the room with the microphone.
Yeah, to moderate. I would call it moderating the discussion more. I mean, yes, the questions will go through her and she'll, but she will facilitate and moderate. Not the wordsmith here, but I think just, we don't want it to be too structured.
Right.
But are you going to be avail, like...
Yeah, I mean, all, we have multiple microphones. We can, I can be available to answer questions. I'll be holding the microphone anytime something comes up.
Because I feel that there's going to be questions, such as our question here tonight, where I'd love for you to step in and say, look, we really can't say no franchises because of...
Oh, sure, yeah, no, absolutely.
I think here, having you step in...
That's fine.
Which you should have done twenty minutes ago to us. And say, you guys can't ask that question, so...
Sure, I can do that.
Okay, anything else on this then?
So, we have a format then?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Are you all set?
Yeah, no, that was good. I'll put something together for us to base everything on now.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for allowing that slight digression, Madam Chairman. We're sticking the mud thing.
Okay, then, the, do we need to talk anymore about this joint meeting with EDC?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I think it will be similar in some ways in that it will, the discussion should flow naturally, but...
We have a project to work on.
We have a project to work on, but I do think that a discussion about the relationship between the two groups and how it should be more, let's say, high functioning would be appropriate to have as well. But I think tying it into how we work on the lodging form would be excellent.
Yep.
All right. Planning board rules and procedures, you received a copy.
Yeah, and I think the only comment here is really that we had intended to revisit these after our recusal workshop, and we've had some issues scheduling with that due to various reasons. I, we had tried to schedule for the second, before the second March meeting, but Laura was unfortunately unavailable. So, what I'd like to ask is whether the board would be comfortable with me proposing the two, before the two April meeting dates, which would be, I believe, the fourth and the eighteenth to her, to see if she's available for either of those days to provide a workshop. I understand that any new members may not be available at that time, but I think, as I said to Kathy today during a discussion, a board of well-educated members on the issue should be able to assist the new board member, should that be necessary.
You're on holiday, right, Peter? You're on holiday in April?
Okay, the, the work program, you have a copy of it? Does anybody want to add anything to this or remove anything?
So, is, I have a question. Is the wayfinding sign ordinance completely separate from the sign ordinance?
Well, Brian did his work.
Yes, yes, yes.
And then I...
In a sense, I mean, yes. They're separate items in the work program.
Then why is that not...
I can cover that a second, Von. I don't know if Von wanted to finish or...
I'm sorry, I was going on.
So, the, the sign ordinance, and I have to look at the copy that you were given. We, we need to conduct a sign ordinance review to ensure compliance with law changes at the federal level. And it's, it's best, in our best interest that we do that this year. The wayfinding signs committee is really a project-based committee focused on the wayfinding sign issue in the downtown C-1 CBD general area, commercial core. So, they're really, they are related in the sense that they both focus on signage, but they're totally different issues in the work program.
So, we should have the sign ordinance on this program too?
Yes, so I have a couple of items I was going to address, but that would, that's a high priority item that will involve some legal counsel as well for a review of our existing ordinance.
Why don't you just send 17544 to Laura and ask her to review it?
Yes, we actually discussed doing that during this past round of zoning changes. We weren't able to time it correctly. Believe it or not, this is one issue that Laura is not totally comfortable pining on, so we're going to have somebody else do the review of the ordinance.
Interesting, really.
It's a very complex issue.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah.
But isn't the key, if, if you have to read what's on the sign, it ain't legal.
If you have to read what's on the sign in order to regulate it...
It's not legal.
It's not legal. So, if you have, if you have to know that something is a, let's say, a real estate sign, and you have a certain requirement based on the fact that it's a real estate sign, you can't have that requirement in place. It has to be based on location, other dimensional requirements, things of that nature. There are even questions so deep as whether or not, for example, directional signage can be regulated at all by local municipalities. So, that's why, and many of these questions haven't...
It's basically a safety issue.
Can or cannot?
That's going a bit far.
Well, there, there really, there are opinions out there that they could, it could be covered under this new change, so, just food for thought.
Did you say can or cannot be regulated?
Cannot.
Right. Cannot, so. To the men's room is an illegal sign now. To the farm.
Well, and that, that brings up the question of the wayfinding sign committee. I mean, does that have to be put on hold yet again because of the sign ordinance?
I don't feel it has to be put on hold, because again, I think that's focused on a very specific project. I guess what I would say, though, is that business directional signs, in a more general sense, the regulation around those signs would likely change through an audit of the ordinance.
Okay, well, that's my question, because...
But I don't feel that the wayfinding signs committee, and it could be due to my lack of understanding, but I don't think that they need to be put on hold due to sign changes in the ordinance. Because their, their charge was not to implement the sign ordinance. It was really to identify an approach to...
And direct people.
And direct people in the downtown core. So, I just think that, there are different issues in my mind, but maybe I'm off on that.
The way, for the wayfinding sign is...
The way, well, the wayfinding sign is not an exclusive committee either. They're not, they're not refusing participation to merchants. It's open to everybody, so there's no discrimination element in the wayfinding sign ordinances that we might come up with or the, the signs that we might have around town. Because they're not excluding anyone. Everyone participate, everyone is able to participate. Everyone who wants to participate can. That's how I would say it.
That's fair.
Okay, okay. All right, we have viewshed protection on there. Remember that issue came up during the Brewster?
There's another one missing that came up during Brewster was about the setback for the institutional zones. Had an issue about.
Wasn't the multiple road issue, how to enforce the front setback, setback when there are multiple.
Right, and I think it's something like five feet in the institutional zone or something really bizarre.
Yeah, I remember seeing that now that you bring it up.
And it's, we talked about getting into that because it seems incorrect.
Does that make sense? There are issues with determining what is the, what are the front and side setbacks on parcels with multiple road, with frontage on multiple roads, basically. And I believe that did come up as part of Brewster. And I saw it on a work plan.
That was a significant.
Significant issue, so I apologize for that falling off the work plan.
It's less restrictive.
Isn't, isn't the usual rule, the more restrictive zone governs?
I think. It must have been an issue. There must have been a reason.
The setback on Clark Road was 25 rather than 30 because it was a side setback.
Okay.
I don't think it's a complicated change.
Yeah, okay.
Was that the issue, or was there also the issue with the new house up at the top of the hill?
Yes, right.
No, was it?
The house on North Main Street.
Yes.
But it was more so the orientation.
But setback as well.
Yes, that was a setback.
It was more the orientation. The front door was off to the side road around Main Street.
Yeah, we couldn't, couldn't do anything about that, but it seemed like it was very close to North Main Street.
So is that, is that, are these issues on the work plan or is that what you're suggesting? Either way, this issue about.
Okay, because everybody blew me off.
You didn't do it.
On the North Main Street issue.
Blew you off, these guys. This issue about the, the views. I don't know where the status is, but I believe that, that issue is still under appeal.
The, the.
Brewster issue?
Oh, yeah.
So, so we should, we should probably wait until we have some more clarity before we, what's the word you use, opine? Before we opine on the views issue.
But that's not one of the issues that is being raised before the Superior Court. It's not, issue is not viewshed interruption. The issue was application of a zoning boundary.
That is true.
At the pleasure of the board.
I think the viewshed, viewshed protection ordinances are going to be really hairy to deal with.
I, I think there's no issue with keeping it on the work plan at least, but it may be deprioritized a bit due to the priority of other items on the work plan. So, I hope that we have that issue resolved by that time.
Okay, so we pretty much have input from. Okay, all right.
Are, are we moving on from the work plan? I just had a couple of things.
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just a few other minor items. Obviously, we are still talking about the updates to the zoning map. Additionally, I've started compiling a list of minor zoning modifications that need to be made within the ordinance that I've run into during my time, some of which are simply administrative error on the part of the code company that they can actually adjust. Others are simply wording changes that I'd like to make to make the wording more clear and, and applied more clearly. Additionally, I'd like the board to think about, and we discussed this a bit at the last meeting, moving landscaping, lighting, and parking standards out of the zoning ordinance and into the site plan regulations, not in their entirety, but sections of them. And I'd like to try and tackle that this year, believe it or not, as I think they're more appropriately applied from within the site plan regulations and obviously more flexible when included there. And the last thing I would add is that if anyone was caught the zoning board of adjustment meeting last night, there was a discussion of uses that are included in the parking standards that are not allowed anywhere else in the ordinance. The reason that that's done is to provide parking standards in the case that a use is proposed through variance for areas within the community, so that a parking standard is available to be applied in that case. Does that make sense? What's critical though, I think, and this is one thing I'd like to look at as part of my sort of compiled list, is that we have a definition for all of the uses that are indicated in the parking standards, and at this time, we do not.
You might go crazy trying to do that.
I'm not sure that we will. But I think that's one thing that we could tackle. An example came up related to small engine repair last night. A definition that we include, or a term that we include in our parking standards, we have a parking standard for it. However, we don't have a definition in the ordinance, so it's something that we need to look at moving forward.
Well, you're exact, you were at small engine. There was an attempt made by one of the ZBA members last night to have a definition of what's a small engine. And I think, stage right here, colleagues said, you know, we could, we could go blind trying to figure all that stuff out. I just, I don't know whether you're going to dig a dry hole trying to define all of the possible perturbations of this, take a whack at it.
And I'll be honest, there are definitions out there, I believe, that could be used and simply inserted. We just, we haven't included them. This is sort of a error on the, on the part of the town. So we'll work to rectify that in the future. That's really all I have to just sort of add to the work plan.
Okay, great. Okay, master plan.
What was, what was the issue that Stacy had raised? You said Stacy had an issue?
Coming up.
Oh, it's coming up, I'm sorry.
We can get through this one quickly.
Stacy had an issue on master plan?
No.
Okay. Matt, master plan, what's next here?
Yes, so no real movement from the department side on this since the last meeting. We obviously have a couple of other things going on, but you'll see included in your packets, an email from Mr. Hodder relative to possible format changes or adjustments to the master plan. Just a suggestion, suggestion, I think. I'm not sure if you're interested in having the board discuss this tonight or.
No, I think since it's three minutes to nine, and we're all running out of patience and time, and I'm getting tired. I'd like the board just to look at that and think about it. Maybe it's something to think about, maybe it's not. But what I would like the board to, to address is an issue that I'm feeling somewhat anxious, antsy about. John Thurston and I are, we have proposed ourselves for a subcommittee to do the community facilities chapter of the master plan. We have proposed ourselves, but we have not been officially voted into the subcommittee to run it as far as I'm aware. I would like the board to consider a motion to appoint John and I as co-chairs of the planning board subcommittee to craft, which is charged with crafting the community facilities chapter of, draft chapter of the master plan. With that commission in hand, John and I would then proceed prior to the June public forum with gathering data which can be presented at the June public forum to those members who want to be part of the community facilities group. We can all get on board and get this done within the 2017 timeframe that we have been charged with. So perhaps I'm, I'm hope, I'm conveying my concern about the timing on this. It's a fairly complicated chapter. There can be a lot of interviews of people, particularly in the town. I'd like to get all this done and public input in the thing written by the end of this year, and if we don't move quickly, I think we might not be able to do that.
I apologize for not knowing the answer, but what is a community facility?
Community facilities, town provided services, namely, according to the 2007 version of the master plan, community facilities chapter, population, fire, rescue, police, solid waste, library, and arts and culture. Museums, teen and senior facilities, and so on.
Population?
Correct.
We're going to have a plan for population?
We don't have a plan for population. We have an acknowledgement of the current population trends, which will be more extreme now than they were in '07. Aging population, what facilities does the town provide for the aging population? Where do we need more if we need more?
We do have a population chapter.
We do have a population chapter of the master plan completed.
Yeah, and I'm going by what was in the '07 master plan, and I'm going by what the planning board handbook by the OEP suggests might be something within purview of the community facilities. There is a problem of overlap. Many of the communities, I mean, you're doing infrastructure, we're doing solid waste. That's kind of an overlap there. We're doing arts and culture, but there is perhaps an arts and culture chapter. There was in '07. We're supposed to be doing museums. In '07, they did fine arts, painting and stuff like that. But you could put museums and things of that sort under the arts and culture chapter too. So stomping grounds have to be fenced off.
Curious commission would bump into you a little bit.
Exactly, exactly. So we, those sorts of issues have to get crafted out. But the important thing is, we can talk about this forever. And if we don't do something tonight, it'll be two weeks from now when it comes back up again. And in the meantime, two weeks will have gone by when John and I could have got out beating bushes.
Would you like us to make a motion?
I would very much like a motion.
Well, no, wait, just a sec.
Unless Kathy doesn't want.
I mean, I, I thought we were going to start out with you having drafting something for each chapter.
Yeah, and I, I am somewhat conflicted. I mean, I, that was the approach that we had identified.
I'm talking back to the meeting that you and Vaughn and.
Right, and we, and I'm saying I'm conflicted because we had developed an approach that, that identified that as the path forward. I guess it's really up to the board whether or not you want to harness the energy that obviously some members have already to begin their work, whether you'd like to appoint the committee chairs now to begin that step without staff assistance necessarily. But I can say that right now, I do not have the capacity to provide that assistance immediately. That's really up to the board to make that decision.
Well, I, I mean, we want the master plan to be somewhat coordinated. And, you know, organized.
Right.
And if we have, first of all, the committees are supposed to include other members. This is a public process.
Right.
And, so, I mean, I guess it's up to the planning board as to how we want to proceed.
It seems to me there ought to be some kind of an outline proposed, let's say by you, and presented to us to determine which chapters address which issues. You know, who, who has it on their plate, so that we don't have a lot of conflicting, overlapping. So I think an outline of the chapters.
What I did when I looked at what the community facilities chapter would include was to go back to the '07 plan and to read the OEP handbook for planning board master plan creation and figure out what they thought was in the, in that particular chapter, and then craft, carved out that section for the community facilities chapter. As far as public participation is concerned, this is what I thought Kathy, and I'll throw this out to the board as, you know, in, in general terms. Rather than waiting until June and saying to the public at large, who wants to work on this? Let's, that's not great. Let's get together and let's talk about what it might be nice to have with the police and fire, and start fresh there. I thought instead to go to the June meeting with the data from the fire chief and the police chief. What's going on? What have they got? What do they need? What can we do better? What do they need to do to improve? And then at the June meeting, anyone want to be involved in community facilities? They come along and volunteer, and we present them with the data that has been gathered. Don't lose the time between now and June. And we all sit down and think, this is what the situation is today. Look at the '07 master plan, that's what it was then. Project out 10 years, where do you think we should be? Or however the question is to be phrased, and then get public input. That public input plus the data that would have been generated goes to crafting the master plan chapter. We need to interview the chiefs. We need to interview Mr. Tasker to get their input on the current state of solid waste, police, and fire. Do we need to go up there, do we need to bring them into a room as a committee? And have them testify to our subcommittee as to where the state is, or do the two chairs of this particular committee go up to the fire station and talk to the chief and gather the information ourselves, and then present it to our committee members and begin crafting?
Yeah, go ahead Paul.
So, so I, what I hear is that the only, I shouldn't say the only, but one issue that's in the way is that there may be some collision or overlap in one of the areas of your remit versus somebody else's. Okay, we're adults. We can sort that out at the time that we see the collision occurring. I would say that I don't find a harm in starting now to constitute this team who actually wants to get some work done. Let them go. Let them go do it. And if, and if we have a collision and, you know, we're, you know, we're tripping on each other and one person's doing sewer and the other person's doing solid waste, I bet we can sort it out. Don't you think?
We had this, we had that collision in the '07 master plan, and it wasn't fatal to the master plan in '07. People spoke about similar issues in '07.
Right.
On different chapters, and no one was criticized for being repetitious. I, I don't think that's fatal.
Right.
I'm just concerned if we wait, if we put out the call and we wait until June and we get a group of people together and we sit down and some of them want to go with, with the chapter, and then we call for a meeting, say in a week's time, make it convenient. It's in the summer, people may be going away, maybe having vacations, school will be out. We get together in a week or two weeks, and now it's end of June, beginning of July, and we're sitting down and thinking about getting data together. And then maybe by July, September, we have some data together and we sit down and do a draft, and it's October, November, and all of a sudden it's a team.
So it seems like our, my colleague here is, you know, kind of thunked this through. Is there something that we should really consider to, to say, no, that's not a good idea? Don't start now. Is there anything that's in the way?
Well, frankly, I mean, we haven't established chairs for all of the committees that were intended to be completed in year one. I mean, I, I definitely think that there's a concern that these will move at different speeds. And furthermore, I think, I understand that conflicts may be resolved naturally, but I certainly think that measures should be taken in, you know, before that happens to outline these chapters a little bit more comprehensively or at all before data is developed, data are developed and conclusions drawn.
No conclusions to be drawn, Matt. Data developed, yes. Data can be crafted in any way you want it to be crafted. The form the chapter takes can be whatever the board wants it to be. The raw data stands regardless of what the form is. And we're not a convoy. We don't necessarily have to go at the same speed here. If, if John and I were commissioned and we worked diligently, and come September, we were done with our data gathering, and our committee had worked and we got a draft together, we could pitch it in somebody else's chapter if necessary.
Okay, so what, what's the, first of all, you have been designated.
I don't think we.
There hasn't been a vote though.
It's in that little thing. I'm not sure there was an actual formal vote.
There wasn't a formal vote.
Okay. Looking at this piece of paper. This is the, the work plan, and we discussed it at the last, last meeting. And John and Mike.
The minutes at the February 21st meeting, we did discuss it. It didn't seem that a vote occurred. That's the only concern I have.
Oh, okay, so you want to vote? Okay.
Right.
I move to accept that list of proposed committee chairs?
Seconded.
I move to accept that list as committee chairs.
Okay.
And my esteemed colleague seconded that.
Oh, okay. Well, that includes you.
I'm going to nominate myself.
For public infrastructure. Mike for natural resources, Mike and, and John for community facilities, and Vaughn for cultural and historic resources. That, that's as far as we had gotten. Okay, so, that's your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, does somebody want to second that?
It's been seconded.
Okay, all in favor of appointing the folks I just mentioned as chairman of the committees for the master plan that I just mentioned?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay. And so now, how about Mike and John's proposal? How does the board feel about that?
I would like to propose a compromise that each chapter head starts out with a basic outline. Let's see what we think is on our plate, and then we could review it so that we don't have overlap.
I, would, would that be okay? Like.
I, would, would that be okay, like, if I could, so, the leadership of these various committees comes back to this August group and says, "This is what I see as my remit, these are what I see as my prospective deliverables, have no idea yet about, you know, what conclusions I'm gonna reach", would that serve the purpose a little bit for you?
It would get halfway there, my big concern here, though, is that we have, the agreement was that we would establish a structure for all chapters.
Yeah.
My concern is that we haven't done that yet.
I don't think all chapters are amenable to the same structure.
I'm sorry.
I would, I, I would disagree, I mean, with, with, select exception for perhaps your implementation chapter, revision chapter, I would argue that other chapters can adhere to the same structure. That's my, perhaps my biggest resistance, because when, during the discussion over the last few minutes, that was actually, I think that's an excellent compromise, but I do think that there needs to be agreement on what the general structure is for all chapters before that moves forward.
Why?
Okay, well, when can we deal with that?
Well, it sounds like we may need to deal with it now, I mean, frankly, if the board's prepared to vote to release the subcommittee chairs to act, I certainly don't think the planning board can come back in two weeks and say, "Well, hold on, it's, hold on a second, we need to restructure".
We hadn't, haven't gotten there yet, I mean, I, we've gotten the chairman, and I'm trying to find out from you how you want to see this, because when we had our little organization meeting that we were chosen to sit with you, uh, you were pretty specific about how you wanted it to, to run, and so I think it's important that we at least listen to that.
Yeah, and, and I would say that the first step in that process is to establish a consistent structure across all chapters.
Would it, I'm, I'm asking my colleagues to do work here, uh, would it be acceptable as a start, not as a conclusion, but as a start, that the committee chairs, within a date certain, you know, two weeks from today, a week from today, four days from today, provide to you and outline up the chapters so that you can take a look at them and go, "Yeah, that makes sense", and those can be then consolidated and published back to this board for us to review and comment on?
No, I actually think Matt was the one that was going to present us with a structural...
No, I know.
And, and I am trying to delicately balance the fact that I, you know, obviously, I, I would like to sort of guide the process, but obviously, the board members are, are willing to move ahead at a faster rate than I'm possible, that's possible for me to do, so, I think it's, we could have a discussion after subcommittees submit something to me, but I really think the board should make that decision, I would certainly prefer to develop the outline myself, but I hate to make the board wait for me to do that.
Do you have the time, given all the other stuff that's on your table?
Well, that was, we...
And then, I mean...
...had that discussion with Matt when we met, and then we submitted...
And what was the discussion, what, what was the result?
The, the answer is no, I mean, I don't have enough time to work on it right now, and that's why I'm saying that it's a struggle for me to say, "Wait", when I think it's good that you have momentum.
Well, look, whatever the structure...
Hang on, hang on, how about if, yeah, well, you know, it's okay, Mike.
I'm, I'm just, just, just being patient.
What I was gonna suggest is that you put in, in writing, because you did send me an email, what, what your thoughts were to get started.
Well, here's, here's...
And, and, and get that to the board, and then we'll look at it at the next meeting. Matt will have a chance to look at it, I'm not sure that that's gonna be contrary to what he's trying to do.
No, and I agree, may, maybe I can, in, in following Vaughn's lead, come up with a compromise here. The structure of the chapters is not gonna be determined by the data generated. The data's gonna be fed into the structure.
Right.
Would, how would the board feel authorizing the co-chairs of the community facilities chapter to go about gathering data in advance of the structure of the chapters determined by the planner? Principally interviewing police chief, fire chief, Adam Tasker, about the facilities' current state thereof, Cindy at the library, current state thereof. Hold the data in advance, when the chapter's structure has been determined by the planner, the data can flow into the structure along with public input. In any structure the planner wants, we don't lose data, we don't lose time in between then, nothing's lost.
Okay, could you put that in, in an email, so that everybody will have it, and then we can vote on it at the next meeting?
Well, that's voting in two, two weeks from now, between now and two weeks, John and I could've interviewed almost everybody on this list.
Okay, I'm just trying to, um, meet everybody's needs here.
See forgiveness.
If I were to put that in the form of a motion, would that work? Yeah, Matt, I'm, I'm asking you as well, Matt, I don't want to jump the gun here, but you can see, my concern.
Yeah, well, and I want everyone to, to know what the, I mean, we had agreed with the email that we had gave to all of you, that everything was gonna be coming back to the planning board, and so let's get started on the right foot.
Yeah, I agree.
And, you know, all I'm suggesting is that you write down what your thoughts are in an email, we discuss it and say, you know, whatever we're gonna say.
That mean, that, okay, but that just means that it won't work, won't get started for another couple of weeks. If that's, if the board feels that's fine, that's okay.
Yes, that's, that, that's what I'm suggesting.
So you want to take another couple of weeks to digest a proposed plan of attack?
I think it's important for us to, uh, have things in writing as to how people want to proceed, so that there aren't any questions, and so Matt can figure out how it's fitting in with what he's...
Why don't I propose...
So that's all I'm, that's all I'm suggesting.
Would this be a compromise for the next meeting, Mike could prepare sort of the next steps beyond the structure? Sort of a, so what exactly, whether it's data gathering and analysis, whatever you're talking about doing, if you can sort of delineate what exactly that is, and I will agree to provide that common structure at that meeting as well, so we both move forward, and then perhaps the board would be comfortable endorsing the subcommittees to move forward with that data gathering step.
Let me just, hold on, put a thought here.
Go ahead, please.
I think, I think we're confusing form from substance. We have somebody who says, "I want to get some substance going", and we need some form and structure in order to make sure that that all harmonizes. I agree with you, I think it's, it's important to do that. But I think there's, uh, I think we can do both at the same time. I think, I think this committee feels a little energy to get out the door and start talking to the fire, fire department, the chief of police, there's nobody else in this, I ain't doing that, and nobody else is doing that, so, you know, I'm not, I think we could, we could say, "Go, go ye forth, just make sure you get that email to us within the next couple of days".
Yeah, I, I think it...
So form is one thing, substance is the other, go do your substance piece, get the form figured out.
I, I think that at this point, I'll speak for John, but John, if you disagree, let me know. This subcommittee will just sit back and let the board and the chair decide how to proceed, and we will then follow the chairs and the boards' direction.
Okay, well, what I'm suggesting is that you, if you would just please put something in writing as to who you want to interview and what the process will be, we will act on it at our next meeting, and then, uh, Matt will, that's all I'm suggesting, does, if people disagree, then speak up, please. Not trying to dampen any enthusiasm, or...
No, I understand, I understand, you want to do it in a, in a particular procedure. Okay, I'll be happy to do that, John and I will work on an email.
Are you okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Everybody... Okay, and then Matt will get that, and we'll take it from, from there. I mean, pretty much, it, you, you sent this to Matt, where did I get it? Oh, it was forwarded to me, so I didn't even, I, I got this from Matt, not from you.
And could we ask...
If this had gone to everyone, it probably, it would have been...
Is that the one that said that the chapters would have something that says, "Problem, solution"? Is that the, was that the suggested outline? We looked at it a couple of weeks ago.
No, that was, maybe that was in our email, I, I don't know.
I'm, maybe I'm in the wrong meeting.
Okay, well, I, uh, yeah, let, let me, uh, so, okay, you're all set then?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Okay, the, um, the Lake Wentworth seminar.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I sent you folks something that I had gotten, uh, just as a save the date, but Matt has more information.
Sure, so...
Just trying to be togetherness.
Yes, the, the, as you may know, the Lake Wentworth Association and Lake Wentworth Foundation have merged to become the Wentworth Watershed Association, WWA, uh, and their first major event will be the Wolfboro Water Summit, and that's to be held here at the Great Hall on Saturday, May 13th, 2017, from 9:00 to noon. And the planning department will play a role, in addition to the public works department. Uh, my understanding as of this date is that Dave Ford and I will both be sitting on a panel to discuss some of the water quality issues here in town, and how the town has worked to address those through a, a few means. Uh, in addition, there'll be several other speakers, I believe one other panel as well, and, and a keynote. The planning board members are certainly welcome to attend, it will be openly, you know, it's gonna be an open, public event, uh, the intent is to have as many people there as possible, stakeholders of the cause, uh, but at this point, that's really all the detail that the group has released to the public, but I think more information is scheduled to come on that. So I anticipate a robust public engagement and marketing effort from them within the coming weeks.
And so we'll be getting more information?
Yes.
Okay. Scenic Roads, uh, Dave Ford is having a meeting, and he hasn't sent, sent the information to all the planning board members yet, has he?
No, the information is not quite yet public, we're sort of, still in preliminary discussions, but the, the date itself is set, and the Scenic Roads workshop will be on Thursday, April 6th, here in the Great Hall, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And there'll be a couple of issues that will be covered, but principally, the, the workshop will be run by the public works department and intended to address, uh, maintenance issues related to scenic roads, and also identify a vision forward to work with stakeholders and property owners to, uh, develop a new process or protocol for continuing maintenance on those moving forward as well.
So is, is this the, uh, correct, is this the email that Dave sent? We want to know whether the selectmen want to call the meeting versus...
It is.
So is there going to be a meeting notice, or is this a...
No, oh, no, there, there will be a meeting, meeting notice.
It is a public meeting, so there will be appropriate notice.
April 6th, you said?
April 6th?
Yeah, and, and I, I think you're, that we're all gonna get notice.
Yes, I would assume so, yes.
Okay.
You're certainly included on the list of stakeholders. And, and the fact is that this has been sort of quickly put together because it's an important, it's important to have this discussion before the summer begins, I think, and as winter comes to a close, so that is, it's been fast-tracked, if you will, uh, through the public works department by the director.
Okay, okay, can we just quickly go through the minutes for February 14th? Anybody have any... Any issues, or are you all set? Somebody would like to make a motion to approve the February 14th, 2017 minutes?
Motion.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, intentions? Okay, the, uh, February 21st minutes, any issues?
I just, uh, the Vaughn Dugan stated the current innkeepers need to be protected. Then I got somehow she stated the current draft guidelines are overly wordy, those are two separate things. I don't know if our discussion was that weird. It's like, the draft guidelines were the architectural...
The current...
Versus the innkeepers are totally different.
Oh, okay, so the, the draft architectural guidelines?
Yeah, so I don't know. I don't remember the discussion, but it just seems odd.
Uh, do you want that taken?
Just separate, or just two separate?
Yeah. Uh, but there are architectural guidelines. Anything else?
I'm sure this is, uh...
Well, can I, yeah, are you gonna motion this?
Motion what?
The minutes?
Yeah, sure.
February 21st. Okay, motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, and Stacy?
Motion made.
This is Stacy's last meeting, I think you've been on for at least 10 years. That takes a lot of patience, and you've worked on a lot of committees.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we're gonna, gonna miss your, miss your input.
Are you gonna be an alternate?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll let you go easily.
Right.
Well, thank you, you're, that's what I learned, so I, I've learned a lot from all of you, but in particular, I've learned a lot of non-verbal communication and a lot of content from Stacy, and it's been absolutely a pleasure to learn from you, it's great. You know, Kat looks at me when I came up with stupid things, which I do a lot. I do, but also, I, I think some of the real deep thinking that you have, the passion around this. You have 6,000 words. Thank you.
Pat, that passion is well said, that's, that's a lot of passion, thank you for that.
Stacy's buying beers.
Okay, so we're all set until next time.